They gonna be in order? Local.
Present.
Mr. De Sarno.
Here.
Mr. Comensio.
Here.
Mayor Morgan. Mr. Joffrey.
Here.
Mr. Kogan.
Here.
This is McKnight.
Here.
Salute the flag. And a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the meeting in Council, borough, Providence County, Union State of Jersey, I have a notice that's been given in the courts of PL 1975, chapter two thirty-one. That annual notice of revision was made in conformance with section thirteen of the Act. Uh, before we, uh, start, um, it seems like every meeting we have a, a shooting in the United States. And, uh, the last one was, uh, in Allen, Texas, so it's, uh, just standing in the morning. Thank you. Now, the next item is a presentation from Director Harry Delgadum from the, uh, New Jersey State Association of Chief of Police. Harry, it's always good to see you. I know we always get to see every couple of years, because how many times have we been reaccredited?
Well, I'd be honored to see how. It was pretty special. And I don't know if you remember, but I was scared at work, I lost my voice. They only hear what.
Well, you can always get one back like mine.
This time, this time already, I'm loud.
Good.
So, um, it's really special what we, uh, what I'm doing here tonight. I think we could recognize police policy, probably credit. Certainly, it is a privilege, uh, it's quite an achievement. Uh, but when you look at, uh, do I contact to that? Sorry about that.
When you want a context to that, so about fifty-two percent of, uh, agencies that are eligible to become accredited have become accredited out of a total of almost six hundred agencies. Reaccredited once, thirty-two percent. Reacred- reaccredited three, nineteen percent. Reaccredited four times, just below eight percent. Reaccredited five times, three point six percent. Now, what the New Providence Police Department has done, and this is the sixth cycle, is they actually fall on their less than two percent of the agencies that have had demonstrated this commitment longevity to an accreditation program. That's remarkable, that's remarkable. There's only two other agencies that actually have been able to, uh, claim that achievement. So if you indulge me for a couple of minutes, I'd like to share with you the, uh, significance of the achievement. So the New Providence Police Department has made a commitment to adhere to best practices at the state and national level in a highly regarded statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered, uh, by the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission has helped to transparently demonstrate the professionalism and preparedness of state's law enforcement agencies. The New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Accreditation Program is purposefully designed to enhance the professionalism and transparency in the state's public safety system. To induce unity and to the threat of our hefty encouraging law enforcement agencies like the New Providence Police Department to follow standardized practices and policies is potential to life-saving, cost-effective investment. If an agency, awareness plan, verification of excellence, accreditation status represents a significant professional achievement. Now, in the New Providence Police Department, since two thousand and six, two thousand and six, this department receives its prestigious accredited agency status by the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and recognized that attaining accredited status continues to recognize. It's a continuous step in its mission to remain on track with state and national standards and the continued expectation for quality, professional, and ethical policing. So that's really remarkable. Now, the New Providence Police Department has been tried time and time. Jersey. New officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. Officers in accredited agencies, I cite some here, tonight can take pride that they have been objectively recognized for the professionalism and adherence to the highest standards. And in closing, I'd like to say that there's a report that is generated that I get to review and, uh, forward to the commission. As I sat through in March, uh, through our last hearing, uh, I'll just paraphrase briefly to close. Under the leadership of Chief Daniel Hand, the New Providence Police Department demonstrates a high level of competence, leadership, and professionalism. It is the opinion of the assessment team that the New Providence Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency which exemplifies all of the standards of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. So it is indeed an honor, uh, here tonight, because this is the first, uh, to, on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission, to congratulate Chief Daniel Hand, who happens to be up until this point, uh, your accreditation manager, the members of the New Providence Police Department, the mayor, council president, the council, and all those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving their six, six accreditation cycle, joining a very, very, I should say, a six-time, very closely group of law enforcement agencies that have made this special commitment to excellence in policing, so to all indeed, congratulations.
Well, thank you, Harry.
I actually rain.
Oh.
Mayor? Yup.
I myself, and I know council feels the same way, that, uh, we are very, very proud of the work that not only you, the officers still, but your staff does. And the men and women of the New Providence Police Department only have one thing in mind, to keep our community safe. So thank you so much, and I am as well crying. Okay. Okay, now we have, uh, appointments for the, uh, cable TV committee. Uh, Stacy Mache of the library, Alex Menard of the Board of Education, Bob Leszynicz, Gene Metageneck, Christopher LaPrae, Mark Andres, Robert Calor, and Brian Jefford. Can I, uh, move you to accepting appointments?
So moved. All second?
All the favor?
Bye guys.
No, so be it. So when's your first meeting, Diane?
Actually, uh, Wednesday at seven thirty.
Good.
Venue to beach.
Okay, we have correspondence, uh, Jersey Central Power and Light of a public hearing of, uh, the, uh, rider RRC dash RGGI Recovery Charge, uh, state of New Jersey, the Department of Transportation, the state aid program, and I know we're right on that. Right, Bernard?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, board, uh, uh, unitary board commissioners, uh, the introduction of county budget, township of Chatham, land development ordinance, and, uh, New Jersey DEP suspected hazardous, uh, substance, this charge, and that's from the removal of an oil tank. Any comments? Seeing, we go to council business. Alex, engineering.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first order of business, authorization to advertise the municipal engineer. This was the budgeted position that was in the budget this past year. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-three, resolution authorizing return of escrow funds to Redwood, ERC New Providence LLC. This is the return of escrow funds in amount of seven thousand seventy-two dollars eighty-three cents associated with professional services for preliminary and final site plan approval for the expansion of Lantern Hill.
Okay, finance, Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-four is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the twenty twenty-three budget pursuant of NJS forty-eight forty dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL one eight for the American Rescue Plan firefighter grants. Uh, this is grant money in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, all protective equipment for our fire department. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-five is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the twenty twenty-three budget pursuant of NJS forty-eight four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL one nine four eight. This is the Barclay Gill Seed Grant, um, and this was the grant that was received by the mental health awareness and education, um, at mental health awareness and advocacy, um, in New, our new committees, so that was for seven thousand five hundred dollars to get them started. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-six is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the twenty twenty-three budget pursuant of NJS forty-eight four dash eighty-seven, PL one fifty-nine, or chapter one fifty-nine, PL nineteen forty-eight, CDBG dash CB grant. This is the CARES Act, um, and this is grant money in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to help Union County residents prevent, prepare, and respond to the coronavirus. The money is being used to purchase a generator for the De Corso Center so that the facility can be used as an urgency, uh, shelter if needed. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-seven is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the twenty twenty-three budget pursuant of NJS forty-eight four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL one nine four eight, distracted driving crackdown grant. Uh, this is for seven thousand dollars, um, and it's a grant to support the crime driving. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-eight is a resolution providing for the insertion of any of revenue in the twenty twenty-three budget pursuant of NJS forty-eight four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, PL one nine four eight, federal bulletproof vest grant. Um, this grant money is for five hundred and four dollars and ninety-nine cents for the reimbursement of one bulletproof vest for new officer. And lastly, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-nine, resolution authorizing the payment of the attached bills payable list in the amount of seven million one hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and four cents. Some of these significant items on this list include the Board of Education, which is the May appropriation for six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars nine hundred and sixty-nine. Uh, state of New Jersey for the April state health benefit premium, that was a hundred and thirty thousand and two dollars, and the May appropriation for the library of ninety-three thousand three hundred.
I think that's six million.
Where did I, the, I, what did I say?
Six thousand.
No, I'm sorry, six million seven hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Sure, six million seven hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Okay, public court, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one forty, this is the resolution authorizing agreement between the Borough of New Providence and Richard Pitts for public art sculpture, sports series sculpture. This allows the borough enter into a contract for a new sculpture in Harmony Park by Vivian Collins, uh, about, it might be installed around June of this year. This will replace the green sculpture that has been in the park for the past year.
Good, we have public safety. Uh, resolution one forty-one is to, uh, get new hoses for the fire department for eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And, and I'm going to read this next one. This is what I brought up last, uh, last meeting about the new program the county stood, uh, uh, about arrive. Okay, uh, resolution entering into an agreement with Union County to the Alive Together Program for mental health crisis response. This program is a statewide mental health crisis response program which pairs mental health professionals with police officers. The Alive Together Program provides individuals in crisis with help as quickly and as efficient, effectively as possible. When nine-one-one is called relating to mental health crisis, the program sends response teams consisting of local police officers who are trained in crisis intervention along with mental health professionals who can help deescalate the situation and avoid the use of force. The arrive team together also follow up later to ensure that the person is receiving the help they need. In addition, the program provides teams to connect with individuals in their community who may benefit from their efforts. I do believe that we are linked in with Scotch Plains, Berkeley Heights, Summit, and us, Mountainside too?
Uh, Mountainside and Panwood, I think.
There's a, a couple, a couple on our.
A couple. So, um, I think this is a great program. I just saw a, uh, a news cast about how loneliness is the biggest form of depression and causes the most, um, mental health issues. And, uh, it really, uh, came exacerbated, uh, with the COVID crisis. And people just were lonely and they lost contact with other people. And, you know, I think at this time, this is a very, very important program, so I, I think we have to give kudos to, uh, the county for coming up with this.
Yeah, if I could just interject a second, uh, on Monday of this week, we, Diane, Lisa and I listened, there was a web, web.
Webinar.
A webinar. Um, so we listened to more information from the county, and it's, it sounds like such an amazing program, and I'm so happy on that we're now going to be involved in it. Coming particularly at, during Mental Health Awareness Month, um, you know, it's, it's great that, um, New Providence as well as our surrounding area will be included in this, so, you know, big thanks to Union County for providing that. So very, um, interested to see how, how that all works out. Um, it's a great benefit to all of our residents.
And we, Union County, poster children of the state because we have the most, um, towns and municipalities participating. So they were really excited about that.
Great.
Sounds like a great program.
Okay, uh, resolution one forty-three is, uh, for Koch Holding Link, which is for thirty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, and that's a resolution approving the purchase of a new police vehicle. I remember notes a few years ago, those vehicles are twenty, twenty-three thousand, right? So, okay, public works, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first order of business there, stormwater assistant grant application. The borough submitted, uh, for and was approved for a grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand to assist in upgrading the MS four stormwater program to comply with the requirements of the twenty twenty-three tier A MS of MS four permit renewal, which took effect on January first of this year. Tier, uh, the tier A municipal stormwater general apartment authorizes the discharge of stormwater from small municipal separate storm sewers. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one forty-four. Resolution authorizing the borough administrator to execute a settlement, sorry, with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This authorized the borough administrator to execute a settlement with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection during that event of last April of twenty twenty-two. During that rain event caused an abnormal flow through the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, pollutants in excess of discharge limits were recorded. The settlement with the DEP is of one thousand dollar fine. Uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three dash one forty-five, resolution approving purchase order for Cooper Power System in amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the emergency generator under the Sourcewell Co-op Contract two seven eight eight nine. This approves the purchase of the emergency generator for the De Corso Center using the CDBG dash CB grant CARES Act money. Resolution twenty twenty-three one forty-six, resolution approving the proposal of the Torbill Construction, Inc., one seventy-two South Street, Suite one oh one, New Providence, New Jersey, in the amount of thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the Centennial Park gazebo repairs. Uh, this basically approves the gazebo repairs that have been long, um, awaited through, um, uh, I believe in sometime in very early November, uh, we saw, um, unsafe condition. Um, some repairs were done just before the December, uh, event, and the last few, uh, months, there's been, um, several, uh, um, estimates that were submitted to the borough, and Torbill is our vendor that's gonna get this thing up and fixed.
So, real quick, on, on the, um, the grants, we got a hundred and twenty-five thousand in grant money, and we're, and we're, we're purchasing nine, a hundred thousand for the generator, so where's that twenty-five thousand go?
The rest of the money is going towards the, um, transfer switch and the electrician to install it.
You went to a request for bid?
Yes. Did I miss?
Yeah.
They came on, they came on after the print.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't see that one either.
Um, one second. Oh, and, uh, sorry, the, the, the last order of business, some, uh, request to bid twenty-two twenty-two sanitary sewer lining project as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
One thing, uh, I wanted to say about the, uh, gazebo, I'm going to. It was brought to my attention that somebody put out on, uh, one of the social platforms that they were very upset about the, uh, about the pavilion, that it wasn't in shape in November. You know, that we planned to renovate that park in twenty twenty with our tricentennial. We had no idea that the pandemic was coming, no work could have been done. The other thing, later on, we wanted to fix it, but there was a supply chain issue. I wasn't about to do repairs on a, on a facility when you had no idea if you were going to be able to get the materials to, to do the project. It would cause more damage than, than, uh, the wear and tear that's already there. I guess my point is the, that park was built totally by volunteers and grants from people, by, uh, benches, lampposts, bricks, and it didn't cost the local taxpayers anything. And I'm glad Torbill got this contract because he actually built the structure free of charge. None of the contractors that did the work out there got paid, except for one, the one who laid the bricks. But everything else was donated by residents of the town. Um, I think it's unfair that people jump to conclusions that things weren't done on purpose. We always try and do the right thing. And, you know, instead of asking why something wasn't done, people jumped at the conclusions, and I think it's unfair. And I think it's, instead of, you know, trying to tear the, the town down, we should find, you know, look, bring it up. This is a great community. You know, I, I, I go to different meetings with other mayors and, and everybody says, man, Providence, what a great town. What a great town. And I agree. So, I just wanted to say that, because it really bothered me. Okay, next thing we have, uh, discussion items about the downtown organs. You know, we, uh, talked about different things about the downtown organs that, um, that came, came to bay, we listened to a lot of people. Um, and there's a lot of things I agreed with. And I, you know, but you just can't change things while somebody has an application already in the pipeline. You can't do that. So, right now, it wasn't thirty feet years ago. It went to forty-five. We chose to bring it down to thirty-eight, the planning board, and we took that recommendation. However, you know, people came up here, and I don't, I don't look at this town as quaint. You know, this is a, a, a small suburban town. It's not Stow Ridge Village or Liberty Village or things like that, but I think we do have to put some controls on. And I am, you know, ask the council to go back, go back with the recommendation to the planning board and lower the height to either thirty-two or thirty. And, uh, if there is a, a third story that is going to put on that we do a step back on that third floor so it doesn't look like just up and down, and give it some, uh, context. So, um, now I know people say, oh, you just do what you want to do, but we can listen. And I think the majority of us feel that, you know what, we heard it. We couldn't change it because an application was in, but we can change it now. So, I said, we go back and, and send it back to the planning board, and Matt and I were there the other night, and, you know, they said, go bring it to council and see how they feel. So I just want to, uh, uh, ask, well, do you feel the same way to bring it down, or at least look at it?
Absolutely, yeah. Just clarify, clarify a couple of things. So, so we didn't, we never approved to go to forty-five. We, it was a recommendation.
Yeah.
For, for our downtown master plan to go to forty-five, which we reviewed as a council and said, nah, it's still too high, so let's.
And the planning board too.
Let's make it. Well, the planning board, the planning board reviews consistency with the master plan, to make sure that's consistent with the master plan, but, um, and we, when we approved, I think, uh, we landed on thirty-five, right? The thirty-five, I believe, we landed on?
Thirty-eight, currently thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay. And the current, the current project that was reviewed by our planning board was thirty-five, came in at thirty-five feet. That's, that's thirty feet, I think, to, to the building and then another five feet for incidental.
Power pit.
Power pit and whatnot, which is kind of off street. And so what you're asking is to go back to the planning board to recommend that we decrease that height to thirty feet?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. I, so, been on planning board a lot of times, with yourself as well.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying. We did hear, we got some great feedback from some residents, and that's what we want. That's what the planning board does, right? We're, we're just residents listening to what, you know, the professionals are saying, right? Getting input from the public and then making decisions based on all that information. Uh, that we did get some good input. I felt that the master plan that we approved was good. We did get some good feedback. Can we take some of that feedback, go back to our planners and ask them to look at that feedback and make decisions, like you said, on maybe offsetting the third story? Uh, that might be a little bit better, uh, visual for our downtown. Um, I'm, I'm happy to do that, and I think that's a good idea. My concern on the height is, again, I think we need professionals to tell us whether or not, you know, if we go to thirty feet or thirty-two feet and you can do three stories, then, then you can do that, then that's the height it should be. If they say that you cannot do that, then I think we have to think about, because I think we landed on a number we felt was comfortable based on the planners, uh, in, in terms of what we were hoping, you know, a retail space would get versus two residential, uh, properties above it. Um, and I think there was some leeway there, so I think you're right, and I think we did.
I think what you and I even discussed it because the, the residential units are putting ten-foot sewers. And, you know, what do you need ten-foot sewers? You know, well, that's the most desirable, but we're not here to make things the most desirable. If it, it's, it's, you know, what is best for the town. And, you know, quite frankly, and I think you agree, is that there's not probably one other space that, that'll qualify for three stories anyway with the parking restrictions. So, I think that's the other caveat to the thing. You know, sometimes you may be better off just, uh, make it into two stories and, you know.
So if they don't have the parking?
Yeah, to reduce the parking. So, you know, I think it works both ways and I think, I know you've thought about it a lot and I have, 'cause we've been going through this for years.
And we, we, we said all along, right? We said all along that this is a living document, something that we're gonna, you know, continue to look at and make sure that it makes sense. We did approve the plans of, of the, um, forty-four South Street, right? So, um, right?
Yes.
I've only heard that, like, for years.
In the, in the pipeline for a long time.
But, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm very, uh, very excited to see how that turns out. I think it's gonna turn out well. I think the plans, I think, you know, if, if anyone looks at the resolution of those plans, it's like fifteen pages long, right? And there's pages and pages of, of, uh, you know, the, the, the owner of that property, you know, listening to the convert, the questions and, and listening to the recommendations, not only of the planning board, the professionals, but of the public. So, um, you know, they're, they're trying very, very hard to, to make sure that they're gonna build something that they live here too, right? The owner of that building lives in town, he has, you know, uh, business is in town, he wants to do what's right for the town. So I'm, I'm excited to see how that turns out.
The other thing I heard was that, uh, the building next door to bank, they're talking about selling that and not the next one. So I think that's something that we really have to look at and be concerned about in the future, so.
So Matt, are you saying that at, what, like in your opinion, thirty or thirty-two feet is adequate still for?
I don't, I can't answer that. I'm saying if, if a planner can, can, can tell me that, 'cause I know we had conversations about that height. We, we landed on the height because, because of the, the, the retail space, the height of the retail space that we wanted to have and, and all the different mechanicals that needed to go on. Um, and, and we have, I think we went back and forth a little bit on, uh, whether it was thirty-two or thirty-five or, or things, or, um, and thirty-eight. And so, so I'm, I'm definitely open to, to hear, you know, the professionals tell us, you know, based on what we've heard and based on what the, the public wants, based on, you know, what, what some of the planners are seeing, you know, if we can reduce it.
Mayor, I, I wanna thank you for bringing this up. Um, I, you all know my, my view on, on this. Um, and this was discussed in the fall when the ordinance changed from thirty feet, two stories, to thirty-eight, three, thirty-eight feet, three stories. Um, I was clear and consistent in my opposition to that. Um, I like to think that I, I heard the people at that time and it was clear to me at that time that, and it's still clear, that people have concerns going up higher from a visual impact standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, from a parking standpoint, adding that additional story. Um, I simply don't see the need to, to increase it at all, uh, given the massive development we see everywhere else. I'd like to see that kind of be absorbed first, understood first, before we'd even propose something like that. So, while I, um, while I certainly, you know, I think this is a great step in the right direction, you know, personally, I would still prefer to go back to the original ordinance of thirty feet, two stories.
Okay, is, the question is, do we want to send it back to the planning board?
Yes.
Yes.
I would definitely, I would like more information from the planning board.
Just, just one comment, only 'cause I'm probably the newest member of council, haven't had a chance to even comment on this. I, I, I applaud your effort, Mr. Mayor. I think it's great that we're bringing it back down. My only concern, and it's always been before I was even elected, is the resident. Uh, I think two feet, give or take two feet, I don't think makes a drastic difference. Um, but at the same time, knowing the congestion we have and putting more residential units, so I, listen, the process is, is, is well managed by the planning board. I hope they just consider that aspect of putting more residential.
Yeah, it may be more conducive to just make it two and a half stories. I, I, I don't know, but, uh, you know, it's, I think it's something we have to look at.
Like you said, it's dynamic and it's a good, let me go with that.
I mean, there's a lot of places downtown that are two and a half, so.
Very good.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's go to committee reports. Actually, my big thing was, we got re-incredited again. One of three towns in the state of New Jersey, which has five-hundred-and-sixty-five municipalities. I think that's a pretty good record. And, um, the fishing derby that the PBA and the, um, and the Community Activities Department ran was outstanding. Everybody had a good time and the donuts were pretty good, too. Right, Alan?
Excellent.
I thought so. Okay. That's all I have. We talked about the Abide Program, which I think is beneficial, so, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have several things to talk about. Um, we're excited about the Cable Committee that's going to kick off next week. Um, uh, sustained, no, uh, sustainability. The next, uh, big thing is our Free Cycle in, uh, September. Um, and we're working on some PSAs, like about wildflowers help pollinators. Um, Communications, we had a great meeting last week. Um, sorry, I was remiss in not mentioning it the last council meeting. Um, we had an opportunity to look at the website, which is, um, by Civics Plus, which is a great company in the country. Um, a little-known fact is many website administrators use analytics to see what users are basically using, and that is totally on our radar. And Providence uses Google Analytics to see how people are using the Borough website and our efforts are being focused on, um, to, uh, on efforts to ensure that the functionality that people are looking for is there. And I think we're all really excited about the, what's going to happen. We are on target for, I believe, um, mid-June, um, early July. Um, Board of Health, that was a very interesting meeting. Uh, there's a big sign outside, which looks beautiful. There is a health fair for seniors at the DeCorso Center the morning of May seventeenth. Um, there is also vector-borne diseases, I believe that's what it's called. We should be on the lookout for those this year because of the mild winter. Tick-borne and mosquito-borne illnesses are going to be on the rise, um, so please be careful with standing water and stuff. And they were talking, telling us about the Lone Star Tick, which is, um, actually almost like a predator tick. It's kinda scary, um, but it looks for mammals, so please try to be diligent with that. And then Historical Society, there is a flea market on June tenth and they are accepting, um, people if you wanna have a table.
Great, thank you. Pete?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, I attended the Board of Ed meeting on Thursday, April twenty-seventh. That was a pretty big meeting. I have two Board members here in attendance. Um, uh, they approved the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget. The school tax levy increased from one-point-four, uh, million, by one-four, one-point-four million to forty-two-point-one million. Uh, the tax imposed on the average Borough home with the market value of seven-hundred-thousand approximately is a hundred ninety-nine dollars or two-point-two-nine percent. Uh, the budget did include Good Full Day kindergarten and a new course, a new elementary school math program, uh, i-ready classroom. The new course offerings in both the middle school and high school are also included in the budget. Uh, some of their big line items, uh, similar to ours are people-related costs, uh, classroom instruction, forty-two dot four percent, employee benefits, twenty dot seven, and uh, instructional support, sixteen dot nine. A little more on that new math program, which was an interesting presentation. Um, uh, again, they had went through, I guess they evaluated eight programs and brought it down to two, uh, envisioned math after further, uh, uh, looking at the program, they settled on that i-ready classroom. The other thing I'd like to report is from the Community Activities. A couple announcements that the community might find helpful. Registration is open for all New Providence Recreation Youth Summer Programs, including Playground Camp, mini playgrounds for preschool children, and Baseball and Softball Camp. Residents can register online via Community Pass or the Recreation Department, or call the Recreation Department with any questions you may have. Uh, the New Providence Memorial Day Parade, which I know is, uh, has always been one of, uh, a great day in town and one of my favorites, uh, will be held rain or shine on Monday, ninth, beginning at ten a.m., uh, starting on the corner of Springfield and Central. If your community group is interested in marching, please contact the Recreation Department. We hope that all residents will come cheer out, cheer for the marches along the parade route. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor?
So just, I just wanna mention on the web, um, one, I wanted, I wanted to thank the Communications Committee, not only this year, but last year as well. Uh, I know this, this, this website's been in development for a few years and we've had some, some bad luck, right? With the company we initially went with, right? And went almost a year down the road, uh, in development before that got blown up. Um, the website, I, you know, we got a peek at that, right? At their last, last call and, and I think it looks and feels great and I'm really, really excited about it and I think it's gonna add tremendous value to, to the community. Uh, so looking forward to that. Um, on the fishing derby, I think I told, did I tell the story last time about my friend who caught fish for my kids? So he lives up the street and he loves the fishing derby just as much as I do and, and so we went down there and, uh, he was a consultant to some of the kids that were fishing and, lo and behold, a, uh, one of the kids that he was consulting won the derby. So, uh, he is definitely a fish. Uh, but as we were there, um, a little bit later on, as a, a, a child, I don't know, maybe ten, twelve years old, he caught a big lunker, came over, he got his prize, uh, the smile on his face, it was awesome. Yeah, and, and, and that's what the derby's about. It's a free event and, and, you know, our, our PBA, you know, puts that event out for the community, so I wanna thank them for that, uh, and, and it's awesome. And I do have a video of two very large lunkers in the middle of that pond that are still there. I took it yesterday, although it, they were there yesterday. I don't know, people are still fishing out there, but, uh, if you still have a pole, go get them.
Okay. The only thing I caught was a cold. Anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, really, the only thing I wanna bring up is, uh, so we are now in the middle of Mental Health Awareness Month, uh, so I just wanted to point out a couple of things to everybody. If you see the ribbons on the poles downtown, there are QR codes that you can scan for random acts of kindness, which are very nice. There's also a tree that has those. There's one at the library, one at the high school. Um, you may notice that some of our businesses are now painted green. Um, the business community has really embraced, uh, Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, they have hearts in their windows, they have, um, our logo in the window, um, you know, mind your mind in the window, um, and many of them are having some specials. Uh, so you can go into some of the hair salons and get green hair extensions, you can go into the nail salons, um, and get the, the nails painted green, so, um, and I believe we are, um, pending some specials from our restaurants as well. Um, so, many residents, many businesses are embracing Mental Health Awareness Month and really it's just key to be kind to your mind. It's important and we just hope to expand on this as time goes on. And I think they were pretty successful in painting the town green, 'cause I don't think you can drive downtown at night without seeing all the green lights. Yes, and the lights too. So Adam Shopping Center, they were able to turn that green and Harley's as well, so it looks outstanding. So thank you to the business community. Again, thank you to our mental health advocacy and education team. Very passionate, well-meaning, great group, so, happy to be a part of that.
Alex?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, we had a very productive meeting, engineering meeting last week, uh, with, uh, Borough Administrator and, uh, Keith Lynch, uh, really gearing up to hire this new engineer that we saw in the agenda today. I think that will bring a lot of, um, backlog projects to, to completion and it would really help, uh, Keith and his team and Borough. Uh, we looked at, uh, one of the goals to come up with a five-to-ten-year master plan for all the Borough buildings. Address, uh, actively still pursuing, uh, charging stations in the Borough, which will depend on some grants that we're looking into, but very productive, uh, meeting. Um, on the Diversity Committee, I filled in for, uh, Councilwoman Jeff War yesterday, uh, gearing up for the Unity, uh, Day, um, which is gonna be June third from five to seven-thirty. Uh, really, the high school kids that are participating in are taking full control. Um, you're definitely gonna see some more promotional material on the websites and whatnots, publications, and I believe, uh, the Diversity Committee's gonna be marching in the parade and passing out flyers to promote this event.
Lisa?
I don't have anything to report, but I had this nice little invitation at my desk when I sat down today, so I'll just share with everybody else at the, uh, New Providence High School Middle School Art Festival, May seventeenth from six-thirty to eight-thirty. So practical arts, short films, culinary arts, live music, uh, live readings and fine arts, so it sounds awesome. May seventeenth.
What's going on the seventeenth?
Yeah, busy day.
Yeah. Heard of that?
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. I just wanna, uh, remind everyone that the Borough will be closed to the public next Friday. Uh, Borough staff is going to be undergoing, uh, professional development during the day. Uh, the lobby will be open if you have to pick up a permit or drop anything off. Uh, the following week, uh, Friday, we will start summer hours. Borough will close at one o'clock on Fridays from, uh, May twenty-sixth through Labor Day. Uh, all hours, all the remaining hours will be the same. And lastly, but certainly not least, uh, the construction in the Borough continues. There are detours all over. We are very sorry for that, um, but at the end of the day, it, it will definitely be better for the Borough. Uh, we spoke to PSENG today. We're ironing out the paving schedule with them. They are going to start paving, I believe, on or about June first. Um, some of the streets that were in phase one of their, uh, gas line replacement and the Borough will be backfilling on some of those other streets. So, uh, paving is coming and PSENG will be in town for many, many, many more weeks.
They're all over Summit. How many, how many Trumps?
They're, they're, they're everywhere. They hired subcontractors, so they, they are in every town. We, we have asked them to limit the number of contractors in our Borough to three, so there's only three projects at any given time going on here.
Yeah, I'd like to, everybody who walks or rides a bicycle, and I know, I said something to Alan the other day, you know, please be careful. When they're digging up and replacing the, uh, the pad, it, it, it's not smooth, it's only temporary, so.
I made recommendations for streets that need to be repaved, so I'm not bouncing so much.
Uh, the other thing in Jersey, uh, Jersey Central is sending their street crews out. I just want everybody to understand that Jersey Central has a statewide general permit. They can do whatever they want in the right way. Uh, we have no control over it. We ask them all the time, please give us notice if you're gonna take a tree down or if you're trimming, that we can notify the residents in the area. A lot of times it just doesn't happen. They send out a, a, a contracted crew and they just go and take a tree out. But, um, you know, we, we try and work with them, sometimes it's not successful. But, um, I just want everybody to know, we all like trees, but if a tree's dying, they take it down. And I guess taking the tree down is better than losing your power for a couple of weeks, so, and we've all seen. Okay, uh, anybody wishing to address council? Yes, Rebecca?
Rebecca Kniglio, forty-eight Marion Avenue. I made you an arts and crafts project because nothing else I'm doing seems to get through to you, so I use magic marker. And people lie, but pictures tell the truth, so you can take a look at that. I wanna first start off by thanking the strong women and gentlemen who came out to support me tonight. Many people wanted to be here, but I did not want them to give up missing their children's sporting events. People are very interested and watching very closely what is going on with the way my family and I are being treated here in town and our living conditions. So I wanted to give you a few updates since I was here in December. First of all, I never received an apology for the false, here in December, some individuals with their own strange agendas tried to create a false narrative that my terrible living environment has had any impact on my positive working relationship with Bernadette. I'm sorry, but that is just not true. I have respect for her and she has shown me empathy. A few days after I was here, a fire pit across the street from me was left unattended. No consequences were given. I would like to request, again- I would like to request again that the ordinance around fire safety here in New Providence is looked at. It has to be clear when you can burn, what you can burn, and that it is extremely dangerous, careless and selfish to leave a fire unattended. Next point, there are cars and trucks parked all over my corner at all times of the day and night. I have been blocked from accessing my own driveway on multiple occasions. This is me trying to pull over my driveway. These are cars at the corner, at my driveway. This is a truck idling under a no idling sign at my driveway. I have requested a no parking sign across from my driveway so that I am free to come and go in peace. I have been given the same non-answer for years. But this week I was told that I could request a no parking spot from you. So I would appreciate that because really it is the least we can get from suffering here for years. The noise remains constant and unbearable. There is not one peaceful day ever. Sleeping and working is disrupted on a daily basis by loud trucks slamming doors and loud voices outside my office window. We are asking again for noise ordinances and nuisance ordinances to be looked at and enforced, especially given the increase in working from home. Most people work at least nine to five. They are not able to sit outside all day long and talk except outside my house. So this is a very serious problem and we seriously need serious solutions. My workday can start anywhere from 7:30 in the morning and go to 10 o'clock at night. And I'm going to stop what I wrote and bring up a very important point. You have spent most of this meeting talking about mental health awareness. The slogan of NP Mind Your Mind, I don't even know if any of you even know where that came from. But one day Debbie, me and Harry were on a call and Debbie brought up mind your mind, but she didn't want it to be plagiar, whatever the word is. And I said, what about NP Mind Your Mind? Next thing I know, it's all over the place, which is great. But I, I just thought you should know where it came from. So I am a mental health provider and in my office, what I'm doing is Zoom counseling sessions. Not sure if any of you ever attended a counseling session. It's a good idea. It's embarrassing. It's humiliating for me to have to say, excuse me, I can't, I need a second because I can't hear, because I can hear the voices inside my house. It's too loud. It's too loud. And it's a terrible reflection on our not so quaint town. In addition, recently I was harassed in my own driveway by someone I do not know for no reason. I was sitting in my car, in my driveway with my car off on my phone. Luckily, an officer was able to identify the person. We asked for the identity of this person because it was the second time he harassed me. For some reason, we were told we needed to get an overrequest. I wasn't even given the name of the person harassing me. We did the overrequest. We now have his name. And when you look his name up, he was arrested for drugs. The fact that I'm subjected to this form of harassment in New Providence makes me sick. We have been spending months trying to move and we will move when we find a suitable place to go. But for the time being, my home feels like a prison for a crime I do not commit. I do not go outside ever. My windows are closed and my shades are pulled tight. I have no idea what a peaceful day feels like here. So I come to you again and I ask, where is the leadership? Who is in charge here? Who is controlling the chaos? Who is looking out for our safety and quality of life? Right now, this is affecting me and my family. But ask yourselves, what if this happens in your neighborhood? There are no rules and no consequences. Trust me, you would not like it and you would not tolerate it. We pay a fortune to live here and we work hard. You, you have to do better for us.
Well, we're sorry. I'm sorry that you have to live like this, Rebecca.
I don't, I don't believe you. I don't believe in you.
Okay, you don't have to. However, what I am going to say is this. We have told Mrs. Caniglio that when an event happens, she has dispatch. So a police officer comes over and they can handle the situation. That never happens. She will not call dispatch. She, she sends an action line, which somebody sees hours later or days later. It just, we can't do certain things. There are no ordinances. They comply with the state statutes. That's what they do. You could send a border health over there, but they're going to say it's, it, it doesn't violate the decibel levels. We've sent the fire inspector over. You know, if, if she sees something wrong, call dispatch. We'll send somebody over, get the fire official over there and they can, they can issue a summons. Idling. If you have a truck there idling, you're, you know, it's over the three minutes or whatever the, the federal law is, then you can get a summons. But you can't, you can't complain about it after the fact. A, a police officer has to witness the incident when it's happening. As for parking, you cannot spot zone. It's, it's illegal. I mean, I live up on the end of Livingston Avenue. I have a lot of cars parked in front of my house. After I'm done. And you know what? People walk up and down the pass up there in the winter if there's snow. I mean, it's completely packed up there with cars and people who have their kids sleepwalking. So I understand the frustration. And if there was a threat, it should have been reported to the police. Don't, telling us isn't going to help. You have to file a port, a report with the police department. We've offered mediation between the two parties. We've sat down, I know Bernadette, myself, Chief Hen, sat down with the Caniglios for almost two hours. We put in no, no idling sign there. That's all we can do legally. We can't stop people from gathering. There is a First Amendment, freedom of assembly. You know, our hands are tied and I know she's frustrated and I feel bad for her. But there's only so much we can do. And you have to, it, it comes to a point where you're just going to have to call dispatch and get an officer over there so they can, you know, get it a summons if that's required. I know Mr. Rizzo has, has spoken ad nauseam, not only with her, but with her attorney. So at that point, that's all I'm going to say about it. And I wish you, you know, if we could do more, we could, we would. But legally, we can't. So is that an accurate description?
Well, we've actually, we've been down this road before.
Yes. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Give your name and address. Come up, give your name and address.
Yeah, so I'm Pam Ventarella and I've lived in town for about 24 years.
Where'd you live?
On Candlewood Drive.
Okay.
So I've never really spoken at one of these meetings.
That's all right.
It was actually really alienating when you told me not to talk. You know, I just want to say it was intimidating and.
Oh, I, I, that's, that's the procedure.
Okay. Now I know.
No, don't, don't feel intimidated. You're welcome to say whatever you have to.
You know, Rebecca has time in this community ever since I knew her. She, our daughters have been through preschool together and up. So I've known her quite a bit of time and I, from what I see, because she shares with quite a few people her struggles. I've been to her home. I've actually witnessed this myself because our daughters played when they were younger and there were play dates. And I was, I constantly tried to park there safely on that road. I, I never involved myself, but I did see that it was dangerous. And it was also, it was as if they enjoyed tormenting her. That was my sense of what was going on. And I'm sorry that she's in this position and I think if any of us were, would be, I think we'd all feel pretty bad. Living in a town where you feel like, you know, maybe you want to get support or you deserve to have the support and you're not feeling, you're not feeling the love. And I think there is quite a disparity right now. I think she has reported things. I've smelled the gas and the idling. And I think to myself, I'm really fortunate. I love my neighborhood. We have incredible respect for one another. It is such an interesting mix of people. We all get along. We socialize together. The houses are pretty far spread out, but like we still make an attempt to get to know all our new neighbors. And once a truck parked across from my driveway, years ago, when the T-Locks were doing work on their house. And I backed out of my driveway very carefully and I just remember Neil and Jessica coming out and actually asking the truck to move and apologizing to me. And it was just, it's this mutual respect that people have for one another. And I think most people feel it in this town, right?
I agree totally.
It's kind of to the point where like, you know, I think it's kind of like this childish thing where every time she's complaining, they now really enjoy it. And that is one thing that I wish that the town would consider supporting her on because, you know, they found her in town one day and they called her Karen. I mean, who wants to live with people like this? I mean, that is, you know, and I understand, I, I get a sense of who these people are. They've been around a lot longer than me in this town, you know? And I don't want any trouble for them, from them. But like, she kind of deserves, you know, to be respected to and taken care of. And no, she's not lived here for one, two, three generations. But, you know, she makes a significant contribution. She always has from the moment I met her in preschool. She really does care about this town and I don't think she's feeling like anybody really cares about her. I mean, these people can do pretty much whatever they want. They know when they're, they should stop because they don't want to get caught. And then they just ramp it up again. And I'm just like, that's kind of disgusting. And I wouldn't really want to live around people. It would make me want to move too. And I fear the worst when she does finally get to move. Who's going to buy her house? They're going to, they're going to actually do something to spoil the wells and make that not happen for her. Because they seem extremely vindictive, immature and just like incredibly childish. And I worry about that. She deserves whatever her property value is on the sale of her house. She doesn't deserve this treatment. And it's really to the point where it's, it's not repairable. Somebody could sit down with this family and say, you know, can we try? Can we just, you know, try to be good neighbors? Does anybody know what that is? I mean, again, I love my neighborhood. We, I don't see why it can't be like that everywhere. And I do feel for her.
I've been there all my life.
But instead of like going on the defensive with her, I think she's really at the point where she just doesn't feel like anybody really cares about what she's going through.
Let me say this. We have, and go for backwards. We sat down and went through all her complaints. It took about two hours. Okay? There's, I can't go against what the law is. And, you know, we, we said.
But what about just what human empathy and what decency and respect? Does that count for anything?
We're not sitting down with her.
Not you. I'm just saying what these people are doing to her. You know, it's not decent. It's not respectful. It's not, nobody would want to live across the street from that.
I understand that, but legally, they're within the confines of the law. And, you know, I know it, it's, it sounds like we're just, but we have to enforce the laws that are on the books.
You know this family, a lot of people do. They've been around for, ahead with them because I actually would be afraid of what they would do to me, you know? And my daughter, who's still in the school district, so I would never.
I understand what you're saying.
But you have known them a long time. I mean, this family across the street.
I knew his grandfather.
Okay, great. So they've been around a long time.
Decades ago.
Right. But I mean, I mean, is, are these the kind of people that we want to live in this community? What, I mean, what is their contribution except intimidation?
You really can't discriminate who lives here and who doesn't.
Right, because nobody behaves like they do. But I mean, don't you think you could go over there and knock on their door and say like, we care about everybody in this town and, you know, can't we just try, you know?
We'd have to have mediation. It was refused.
What, but you, you did sit down and you talked with Rebecca and her husband.
Right. And we said, we offered mediation.
And?
And she refused. We told, said, when something comes up, you have to notify dispatch. We will send a police officer over right away. She refuses to do it.
Well, she has called the police and the response that she's gotten really makes her feel like she's not as important in this community as they are.
Yeah, I don't think she's calling right away though. So if somebody was walking my driveway, I would call the police right away. You have to, and when something's happening, you have to call right then. You can't like, well, last week this happened or that happened. You have to call and they will send somebody if something's going on. And that's really, and then they have, you have to go to court over it. It's a terrible process, but that's really the only way.
It don't, yeah.
But that's unfortunate.
If, if, if there's something going on, judge to man.
It is a terrible process. In the meantime, she's.
Get to a judge, yes.
Yeah.
It's a terrible process and this is a person who works. She's a therapist. She's constantly, constantly on calls with people. She's constantly working. I mean, I take care of my 98-year-old father. And if I ever had like a, a court case come up, I would probably just not do anything unless somebody was suing me. But if like I had a problem, I have to let it go because he's my number one priority right now. So imagine somebody that's working full-time and has these people. I mean, at some point you lose your mind because you just can't, you, you can't keep it all together. So, and you know, again, I just think it's, it's easier said than done. And I think she's feeling at this point like, um, nobody really cares. And again, I'm worried about her property value, you know? You know, she, when she does get a chance to get out, they're going to do something really bad. I just get a sense that they will. And as a, I'm not a Realtor, but like if I was looking in this town for a home and a Realtor showed me that place and I saw that, you know, I don't know if you've been over there recently, but like the Trump 2024 signs everywhere and the, you know, I would be like, you know.
Oh, they have my signs all over the place and I don't even know where they got them.
But you're you. And Trump is quite controversial. And I think it says a lot when they do, and they're doing it to her. They're not just doing it because, you know, and it's other things. It's, I just, the other day I drove over there and I saw like a giant pile of mulch in the street. And I thought, oh, we get mulch delivered too, but it gets put in our driveway. And I'm thinking, don't they care that somebody's going to steal that? And who can park there? There's like, I don't know how many yards it was. So like, whenever they have a chance, they do really mean things to her. And I wouldn't buy that house. I would actually not even look in this town if a Realtor took me to that house. So, you know, that's my point.
Thank you for that. And, and it's well-taken. We're not unsympathetic.
Yeah.
Our hands are tied.
But I don't think they need to, I think, I don't know. I, I'm, I kind of feel like, you know, we shouldn't just give up. I don't think we should give up on Rebecca. I think we should.
I'm not, we don't, but you, there comes a point where you have to help yourself too. And you have to.
What do you suggest she does?
Call the police when the incident happens.
She does. She's in town and she's getting accused of being a Karen?
It has nothing to do with the police department.
Oh, oh, but it's the person that lives in that house? You know, that's not the police department. Who is that? I, if I was something, want to be accosted by somebody.
Then call the police and say this, file a report.
You have to file a report.
You have to file a report. If somebody, so if somebody assaulted, like not assaulted you, but if somebody harassed you, you call the police and then you file a report. But it just has to get that, it's terrible.
To me, it just sounds like I cannot even believe in this town that you would have to go through those steps.
It's not only this town, it's every town. It's state law. People have rights and fortunately, you can be a jerk and, and, and it's legal to be a jerk. Unfortunately, and I think that's the best way to put it, right Paul? We're not unsympathetic.
Well, I would definitely consider property values in this town, like all around them, because I don't know who would want to live there. And that's the scare, that's probably one of the scariest parts, we're fine once she gets out of there, but you know, that is, nobody would pay.
No, I understand what you're saying.
So, alright, well, thanks.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wish, yeah, Alan?
Hi, Alan Swanson, forty-seven over Hill Road. I, I just have a, I'm gonna ask a question, but I, I want to say that I have lived a number of places. I have been outspoken from time to time and you, you do run into a number of jerks and even in this town, I have received hate mail from time to time. I expect that that would continue. That's something you have to be aware of when you're gonna be out.
Over the years, we've had a lot of neighbor disputes that have come before council.
I, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm being a little bit sympathetic. I, I guess sympathetic in both directions here. I, I, my question is, where did we end up with the, with going back to the planning board? Exactly what is it that you're asking them? Cause I would, I mean, you had a discussion and I just, I'm not sure exactly what the charge is that you're sending back to them.
To reevaluate the ordinance.
Just broadly, just reevaluate the ordinance, because that's a, that's a broad.
I'll, I'll bring up what we discussed at council, we'll, we'll discuss it.
Okay, I just, I just thought, I was just trying to clarify. Is it just about the height of the buildings or, or you're just saying reevaluate? And because it was based on a, you know, the, the twenty sixteen downtown master plan and so there was a lot more to it than just
We were just looking at the height.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm trying to clarify. It's, okay, so it's just about the height. That's all, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Kathleen.
Hi, Kathleen Dolan, I live at twelve Laurel Drive. Good evening, I'd like to speak to the issue of road repairs in New Providence. We all know there's been insignificant degradation in our town's roads that has accelerated over the past year or more between water main breaks, replacement of water lines, replacement of gas lines, general erosion due to extreme high temps in summer and heavy rains that create cracks and widen gaps in service and other things. I've seen and heard Mayor Al ask for patience from the residents and I think we all understand what a large undertaking this type of infrastructure upgrade can be. What we don't understand and what is still not apparent after a pretty thorough search of the borough's about-to-be-retired website is how the work is being planned, scheduled, carried out, paid for, or communicated to the public. Or who is responsible for actually repairing our roads once the underlying infrastructure repairs are So on the website, under project updates, the borough's website shows a P S E N G gas line replacement project update. That was last updated on March thirty-first of this year. And it indicates there are three crews working on Noel Drive, First Street and Hickson Drive. But we don't know, are those projects complete? What are the next projects? There's also a link to the P S E N G website that lists all of the New Providence roads being affected with color coding indicating if the work is complete and progress started. And according to this chart, only about twenty percent of the work has been completed after a year. So I have a question in with P S E N G as to how accurate that chart is. And will it really be a five-year-long project? That's what it sounds like if it's twenty percent a year. So there are occasional notices about streets being blocked off for work, but most times it's not clear how long they'll be closed or what exactly is being done. The need for the work is out of our local government's control, but sharing information about the timing and projected completion dates is essential to allow residents to plan for the disruption and then demonstrate the patience that is requested. And there are public stations here too, as walkers, bikers and drivers navigate the torn-up roads. One resident I spoke to asked if it would be possible to have the police department or DPW tour the roads in town and use a fluorescent spray paint to draw attention to the severely damaged areas to at least give people using the road a chance to avoid the holes during construction. So I would just respectfully ask the mayor, the borough council and borough administrator to please provide the answers to these questions. I know we heard something mentioned today about something that was gonna start. But we really would love to have something in writing, some guideline that we can all use. And would you consider this road hazard painting suggestion? Thank you.
Well, first off, they, we tell them which roads that we're gonna be paving a year ahead of time. So we try to coordinate, right? As Bernard said, they had a meeting with P S E N G where they'll pave some roads, we'll pave other roads and we'll coordinate the effort. Roads can't get paved until after, when, when do the asphalt, uh, factories open.
So paving can't start until the temperatures warm up, which is right about now. Unfortunately, yes, they will be here for years. This project is immense, it's, it's not like a typical, we're gonna come in and do one gas main, they're doing the entire town. So three crews, three crews a week, it's pretty much going to be a very long-term project. Certain streets, depending on the street when it was last paved, the utility company is either resaving from the center line to the curb or from curb to curb. So if we have recently paved it, they have to pave the whole street. If they, if we have paved it five years out, they're only responsible from the center line to the curb. Which is then the, the borough comes in to make sure that the entire street is paved.
Which is a resolution that we passed recently.
Correct. So there's been a lot of coordinating with P S E N G at this point as to who's paving what road in its entirety. So we're kind of trading off-road so that they would do a full road and we would take the other road, you know, you know, they're, they're, they're responsible for so many square feet, you know, so we trade off-road so that, you know, they're liable for what they're liable for and then we pick up the rest. Sure?
Don't confuse, I'm another Alan, so.
Sounds different.
You're in good company. You spoke the same way?
I spelled it right.
Alright, good.
A L L E Y.
Oh, nevermind.
You're out.
Okay, so my name's Alan Lerner, I moved here about three years ago. My main concern is, number one, why? I live off of Livingston on Thomas Street. We actually spoke on the phone last year because of the, you know, our street has been in disrepair. I have an eighty-four-year-old neighbor who I'm really close with, his wife just passed away. He is in Ailing Health and he literally is a prisoner in his own house. He cannot, you know, I went over there so we can like go take a walk, so we can just get like his, you know, blood moving and just stretches he literally cannot leave his driveway, enough the street. He's lived there for over sixty years. He does not remember, and he's, his mental capacity not remember the last time the street was paved. I know when we moved in, you know, the street was in disrepair and then after P S E N G, you know, took the wrecking ball to it, it's, you cannot even drive down the street, you literally feel like you're, you know, in like a milkshake or a meat grinder. It's that bad. And my question is number one, well, one statement first, that P S E N G has access to asphalt, so I mean, waiting until like, you know, this, it warms up, you know, they have unlimited supply of asphalt, why wasn't it coordinated when they ripped up the street? To just, cause they ripped up.
So, so P S E N G has told me that after they come through, they have to wait until the road settles, so they can't come fill your hole and pave because the road will then sag, so there's a waiting period of at least sixty days. On Thomas Street, I know that DPW just went in and replaced curving, put curving in in preparation for paving, which will be in the beginning of June.
That is another issue that I wanted to bring up. The backfill that they used is, I mean, I don't want to swear, it's complete garbage. They completely filled with rocks and glass and this is like, you know, I, like a lot of people who live in this town, you know, I play on the lawn with my daughter and we run around, you know, sometimes we are barefoot and after they sort of like dug everything out and backfilled, I'm like looking at the stuff and I'm like, I'm picking out like literal pieces of glass that like say Heineken on it. And so I actually like, you know, took everything out, sifted through it, you know, replaced it myself with sod because, you know, I, I'm concerned, but I have, you know, neighbors who can actually do that and just the quality of work. You know, the paving stones are awesome, but the gravel-ridden like soil that they use is just complete and utter garbage. And I, I, I really have like a severe problem with that, I wouldn't feel comfortable unless I like to mention that, but my real concern is for the street, like our street, when I spoke to P S E N G, I'm like, hey, when is our street getting paved? Yeah, you know, two weeks. Okay, you know, two weeks is, you know, a month and a half ago. I understand, you know, there's an order of operations and the street settling and, and all that, but I, I would like to know when, you know, our street is gonna get done or if there's a list of streets that are gonna, you had said last year that, yeah, you know, next year, your street is on it, like DPW comes and dumps asphalt from time to time, which, I mean, you know, they, they, they're one of the hardest working people, you know, in the town. And, but they're only good as like the delegation, so they're not actually like, you know, they're filling the holes, but there's gravel everywhere, there's asphalt everywhere and when other streets get, you know, closed and then you have to drive down my street for like a, a pass-through, it just gets ripped up anyway. So, what I really want to know is, when are streets getting paved?
I know you're on the list for beginning of June. You, you, we spoke about Thomas Street today, along with probably thirty other streets that are on the paving list at this point. But P S E N G has told us that we need to get our final list to them by the early next week so that they can be ready to go in June.
Is that a private contractor that put in the curving?
Yeah.
You should talk to them about the lousy fill.
It's the landscaping. And there's another thing, it's, I wanted to just bring up. Um, they put, uh, one of the things that I had mentioned, I had spoken to you about that there is no drain on like my side of the street, the closest one is literally two and a half blocks away. They ended up putting like a catch basin there, but when they backfilled everything with, you know, asphalt, it's now raised up, so the water can't actually get to it. So, it's rained for the past month and I've literally had to like take
Oh, yeah.
I've literally had to take a broom and sort of like, really like broom it in there.
When they pave the road, it'll
They'll build it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, you're right. The other thing is when you said P S E N G has a lot of asphalt, it's cold patch, it's not the hot stuff, so they
I mean, this stuff looked pretty hot.
Yeah, well, they'll heat it up the cold patch, but it's not as good as the, the stuff that comes out of the quarry.
I'm not, I'm not an asphalt expert.
I'm not either.
You know, I see a guy driving, you know, with a, you know, they're, you know, they're big excavators and they're filled with, you know, hot steam and stuff, so, okay.
You're welcome.
I, I, the question that always gets me though, is when I was a kid, they paved a road and it would last twenty years. And I still can't get an answer, why? Why the, the asphalt isn't the same?
It's probably because there's more cars on the road.
It's a backroads.
Heavier cars, they're heavier.
Probably cut it different.
Well, that's, that's probably what they do.
Because it's cheaper.
Yeah.
At least you didn't have the tar and then the rocks thrown on top of it.
I used to work, right?
Not my bike. Just to close this out, I think you're hearing
Thank you, Mom.
There's a lot of frustration around town and I think we just need more communication about
Kathleen, I, I will, I will tell you that we share as much information as we're provided and unfortunately, on any given day, it's not a lot, usually a lot. P S E N G usually emails me on Friday afternoon around four-thirty with the roads that they're telling us they're gonna pave on Monday. But P S E N G does themselves door hanger all the streets that are being paved, so P S E N G is alerted, it's their project, it's not our project, we have no control even what street is coming next. Aside from if we're telling them we're gonna go in and pave, are you doing that street? And pretty much at this point, we've put our own paving projects on hold so that we can go back and pave what needs to be paved from their project.
Okay, would it help for us to all go to P S E N G en masse and, okay?
Unfortunately, I don't think it would help.
Thank you.
Just New Providence, it's, it's, it's the whole area that they're working through, so.
I think we did have a couple incidents where Marion Avenue, they just paved it and three weeks later, they came in and tore it up. And they paved curb to curb, the same with the upper Pearl Street. Just paved it like three days before they came from Berkeley Heights and came all the way down. Never said a word, oh, we just changed our plans, so.
Just, uh, just, just two things. Number one, I think you mentioned water main breaks, right? We have absolutely zero control over a water main break, right? Our infrastructure that's underneath our streets and roads is old, right? We've been talking for years about our infrastructure and, and the water company and P S E N G coming in here trying to upgrade the infrastructure under our roads. Unfortunately, you know, we're having issues with some of our water mains and, and those things have been happening since I've been here for a few years now. And as they happen, they get addressed and unfortunately, it's kind of been pieced now, but P S E N G is rolling this out throughout the whole state, right? They're running new, new gas lines throughout the whole state, billions of dollars, yes, it's gonna take many years, many, many years. They, they spent six months on my street alone.
And we're still there.
Yeah, still there. And the other thing was, I wanted to address, and I know we probably didn't touch on, was every year, we come out with a, we have a rolling plan of streets to pave, every year. So, I, I would be very surprised to see if it was true that a street has not gotten paved in the last fifteen years and if it's true, that, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying I'd be very surprised because we do have this rolling plan of every so many years, every street should be, should either, was it screened, top, top screened or?
My guys
Micros, or mild and paved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I have like multiple neighbors that have been there for like generations at this point. Yeah, no, so, and my point, what I, my point I wanted to make is that if that's true, right, those are things that we should be definitely, you know, if, if we're, we're letting know that that street hasn't been paved in ten years, I mean, that should make its way, right, to our, to our borough administrator and that would be probably the first street on the top of the list for the next year, right?
It goes by what condition that the street is in, but
But considering, right, other factors like, like utility work.
I do appreciate the fact that it didn't get paved last year. I just sort of had to rip it up to do, so, you know, I don't know if it was sort of known at the time that P S E G was gonna be coming in and tearing stuff up, but, you know, I had we had put the, uh, sort of the list of streets on social media that need to get paved.
Right.
You know, I went and visited those streets and they were in much better shape than our street was. And, you know, I'll, I'll take it for whatever it's worth. I'm sort of happy that it wasn't done last year, but I'm, my entire block is looking forward to getting it done this year.
I think Wilbur's on there too, right?
Well, yeah, Thomas and over, it's sort of the, it's a very
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
But it's a pass-through street, so anybody that's coming from Springfield to South is, you know, coming down Livingston, they will, will
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But it's also, it's also in our budget, right? So if you look at our budget, every year, we come out with a list of, of streets that are, are on the, on the budget that we anticipate to pave for that current year. However, right, things do change, right? Utility companies come in and say, hey, we're ripping up this street over here. Utility companies come in and say, hey, we're ripping up this street over here. So things could, do get, we may get grant money and things of that nature, so. So things may change.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up, Matt, because that is part of our capital budget. It's every year they look at the streets that need the most help. Um, and that's before this project started. Every year we come out with that list. So again, I'm not sure about that particular street, but that's something that, if it wasn't on the top of the list, then it would have benefited it.
Do you share that list with the public?
It comes out every year.
Where?
Um, we mention it.
In the capital budget.
In the capital budget. Part of the capital budget. We list all the streets that are gonna be done, all the sidewalks that are gonna be done. Everything is put out there.
Cause I just looked at the budget.
We, we haven't done.
That's not the capital budget. Yes.
We haven't done the capital budget.
Capital budget hasn't finished yet.
So can we look at last year's list? Last year's capital budget? And that says, is that how it works?
It's, the, the last year, that's what should have happened in twenty twenty-two, depending on when the money came in. If, if it was gonna be paid for by a grant, if it was gonna be paid for through the capital budget. Like, we have the Safe Roots to School program. So all those will come out. So there's all different funding that goes on beyond that, behind that. And that should be a part of the capital budget.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address council? See, no one. I declare the public hearing close. Uh, we need, I need a motion for items one through six. So most.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oh, low call.
We skip for it. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Kogi?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion for adjournment. I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Well, Sophia, thank you all for coming tonight.